Everybody, it is Wednesday, May 26, 2021. It is 7:00 PM. And before we call this meeting to order, I just wanted to quickly note that yesterday was the one-year anniversary of the passing of George Floyd. And it was a day that, you know, in my opinion and that of others, changed our world as we know it. And so I would be remiss if I did not open the meeting with honoring his legacy. And so with that, if Ms. Cavalero can establish our quorum.
Good evening, President Householder.
Present.
Vice President Lewis.
President.
Trustee Hack.
I'm here.
Trustee Hernandez.
Present.
Trustee Rocha.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, next we have the flag salute. And I don't think I've done it in a while, so I will lead us in our flag salute. So if you can stand, not. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, and then next up, we have the approval of the minutes. And so with that, I would entertain a motion on these minutes.
I move that we pass, that we approve the minutes as written, as presented.
All right, so motion made by trustee Dr. Lewis to.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Hernandez. Ms. Cavalero, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, trustee Hack.
I approve.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
President Householder.
Yes.
Vice President Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Rocha.
Yes.
The motion to approve the March 10th Board of Education Minutes passes 5-0.
Thank you. And next, we have our superintendent report. So I will pass it on to Ms. Anello.
Thank you so much. So I'll make this brief this evening. We are still working towards a full recovery for many of our summer programs and also for the fall. And this is the time of year when we begin having end-of-the-year celebrations while also gearing up for summer and fall. So it's a very busy time. And I just want to say Happy Classified Employees Week. We spent the last couple of weeks, depending on what school you were at, really celebrating our classified staff. They, they, they have been really amazing through all of this. The Monday after we closed on Thursday, that Monday, they were serving thousands of meals to families in a time when we still didn't know the impact of COVID-19. And it was really frightening. And, and throughout this, our custodians and our maintenance staff have been in every day just making sure that the grounds were mowed, that schools were being cleaned. And I can't thank them enough. And of course, to all of our parent professionals and other classified staff, who, you know, they may have had a different work, place of work at home, but they were still continuing to serve our families. So I just want to say a huge thank you to all of them. And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And so next, moving on to public comments. So the first one we have is individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from the public. So do we have any of those comments this evening?
We don't.
And then the next, we would have individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from district employees. Do we have any of those?
We have one, yes. And I'll be reading this evening. My name is Brian Barnes, longtime elementary music teacher for AUSD. Every year, the elementary music teachers are shorted the time to teach instrumental music. The district has created what should be a great instrumental program by spending a lot of money on instruments and supplies. Every year, we ask for a simple 420 minutes to teach the needed classes at each elementary site. That is enough for seven-sections classes to receive two 30-minute classes per week. Every year, we have to cut corners to come close to what is needed. We give up recess or lunchtime out of dedication to the program just to meet the needs of the students. When the prep allocation schedule is made, band is the first thing to suffer as the district tweaks things to meet the needed prep time. When there is not enough time, we are forced to cut band. Elementary band was made a priority in the initial three-year plan. Hundreds of thousands of dollars were spent to fund the needed instruments and music supplies. On year two, the time to teach this program began to suffer. And every year since, we have seen it cut or just overlooked as the prep schedule is created. This year, I asked that the district make sure that the time for these children is not cut. Any out students have been through a crazy year, and bringing back a solid program will help get things back to normal. A teacher should not have to ask for the time to do their job. If we are expected to teach instrumental, please make sure that we are all given the time needed. Thank you, Brian Barnes. And that concludes public comment.
Well, thank you so much. And then moving on, so next, item four, district reports. We have one from the Citizen Bond Oversight Committee. Their annual on Measure B and Measure C bond funds.
Yes, thank you. Each year, as a requirement, the chairman of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee presents to the board on the findings as they were presented from our auditor. So this evening, we have Velma Wilson to present that report to the board.
Good evening, board trustees, superintendent Anello, associate superintendent Christine Barra, and deputy superintendent Jessica Romeo. Thank you for allowing me to present our annual CBLC report for 2019-2020. Measure B updates. Measure B funds are fully depleted. Most projects on the voter-approved project list were completed with these funds. Measure C. Series D. This of. Vacancies in the. Is not able to renew her term. She feels the position. Equitable Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
Wonderful, thank you so much, Ms. Anello. And are there, I also just want to echo what you said as well in regards to thanking our outgoing senior citizen representative and all of the work that you all do on the Bond Oversight Committee. I know that it's not necessarily the most glamorous work, but it is extremely important to have your eyes and ears on that process. And appreciate you presenting tonight. And so are there any questions from folks? I'll just start off with Dr. Lewis, and I'll just go around really quick, quickfire, if there's questions. So trustee Dr. Lewis, do you have any questions?
Just, so thank you for the presentation, Velma. So just, I guess my first question would be sort of for the Bond Oversight Committee, is there any effort to recruit other, other folks? Like, are there people in the pipeline? Are there, or is that something that, you know, you could, you know, partner with us on, in terms of recruiting new people to fill those positions?
So I will say personally, we would have had more vacancies, but I did do that effort to recruit parents. That's how our parent community on the Citizens Bond Oversight got filled. We are actively still recruiting and we are putting it out there. And it's platforms like our school board meeting, where we want to put it out to the general public that this is an availability for you as a citizen to be able to use your voice and to be, and give your part back to our school district. And we meet.
If I could just jump in as well, we will be posting it in various places, including our Facebook page, probably this month.
Okay, and the next question was just going to be that superintendent Romero. I was going to ask something along the lines of, you know, for those, those listening, it may, you know, it may sound attractive, but may, people may want to know what commitment is and sort of what the duties and responsibilities are. So if they could find that out and sort of we have the place for that, that would be great.
I will tell you, this is probably one of the easiest and most rewarding part of giving back to the school, school district. We meet literally once a quarter, and our meetings typically are less than 90 minutes long. It is open for public, the public, if they have public comments or questions in reference to what we are doing, you can actually submit a public comment. All of this information is available on the AUSD website. Nothing is hidden, nothing is hot, nothing's hiding. So we definitely need your voice. If you are a business owner, we again encourage you to pursue and look at the school district's website. This is your way of being able to give back. You serve your community by having your business here in this community. So serve on our, on our CBLC and use your voice as a way to give back to our school district.
Wonderful. And then let's go, we'll work our way kind of backwards alphabetically. And we'll go to trustee Rocha. Any questions or comments?
No comments, but I agree with Velma. It's a great way to get involved and it's, it's not as intrusive and it just gives you an opportunity to learn more about the school itself.
Uh, trustee Hernandez.
Um, no, I think that conversation before covered all the questions I had. I just wanted to thank you for all the work that you do to both you and the rest of the Citizens Oversight Committee. I think it is very important work and I'm glad that we're getting the time to talk about it.
Uh, trustee Hack.
As always, Velma, you are concise, you are accurate, and you're right on the money. And we trust you to do what you always do. Thank you for doing it. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you so much. And it has been an honor to continually to serve on the CBLC. And as always, I am Velma Wilson, and I love, I'm loud, proud, AUSD.
So I have one last question that's piggybacking off of what trustee Dr. Lewis had asked about kind of the outreach and engagement. And so you said that the meetings are once a quarter, and we're looking to fill our, our senior representative.
Right now. The change, that comes along. Places. There, there, like the other kind of meeting. J, Aaron.
Yeah. Once. Seven. Person. It's that very.
Yes, we will do that. And we. People help meet. We are. Them, to help them with technology. Start.
I will. A shame was to. Sit down and prepare. And very, any question? This maintain. You, you, you through the process.
You. That. For me. You can. It doesn't. And so with that, let's move right on. Um, next. Uh, public. We only have one, and it's our bicycle garden. Presentation. Remember. In the board, there was. Asked. They to come do this presentation. There was. And they, they just. Presentation. The council meetings. Think that, you know. Getting this partnership to the. Really excited. These presenting. We manage the mayor and the director of Parks and Recreation Department, as well as folks from the Contra Costa Transportation Authority to discuss potential partnership with them to, in the creation of a future bicycle garden in our community. And so they'll talk a lot more about those details. But, you know, we've been meeting and we meet, I think it's every other Thursday, and the conversations have been really productive. And really, my understanding of the school district's kind of role in this is that we're trying to teach our kids to be, you know, more conscious and safe bicycle riders. And so those are mostly our kids. So we would kind of, we oversee, or we are kind of, I guess, position in this is that we have the kids that would populate these parks. And so with that, we have, who do we have with us tonight? We have Kirsten Riker, and then do we have?
I'm here, here, yeah.
Peter, and we also have Peter Engel. So hopefully, I didn't butcher that introduction too terribly. And so I'm just going to pass it over to you guys.
That, thank you very much, President Householder. So President Householder actually took half my speech. So I'm going to, I'm going to take my time to just say, I'm the director of programs with the Contra Costa Transportation Authority. It's really great. It's not very often that, you know, a transportation authority or agency gets to spend time with a school district and, and talk about transportation issues. But, you know, safety of children is of utmost importance. Safety of everybody in the transportation network is very important to CCTA. And we all know that, so enough on that. So I'm going to spend some time talking about Kirsten Riker, who, if you don't know her, you will get to know her and you should know her. All of your, all of your principals know her. She has, she has been out in not only Antioch, but all of East County and all of Central County for many years doing bicycle safety assemblies in your elementary schools in, in two grade levels. And she's really amazing. And in some of the pictures she's going to show you in her presentation, she's not only the coordinator of the program, but she's also the stage star. I keep asking her if she has her, you know, appropriate labor license to do, you know, acting. But I don't think she does, so we'll just keep that quiet. But Kirsten's really amazing. She's amazing with the children in the school district, teaching them bicycle safety. And her program, both through 501 Contra Costa and through the Street Smarts Diablo program, not only does assemblies, but they do. We provide free bicycle helmets. We provide safety, how to, how to properly fit your helmet, rock and roll, ride and roll to school. And she can tell you all this stuff. But we really appreciate President Householder's participation in this little working group that we've had. We got very good response from the Antioch City Council last night. They want us to continue looking at this project and moving it forward. So we will continue to do that through the Parks and Recreation Department. But I will turn it over now to Kirsten to, to, to shock and awe you all with her presentation and her, her vision.
Uh, thank you very much, Peter. There's certainly only one way to go after that introduction. Hard to live up to that introduction, but thank you for it. And thank you, superintendent, president, householder, trustees, staff. We appreciate your time and we're excited to share this idea. We really hope we can bring to Antioch and the students in your district. So again, my name is Kirsten Riker, and I'd like to dive into the presentation with a really cool video that, that'll just paint the picture of what a bicycle garden is and what it might actually look like here in Antioch. So I think Mr. Gangler is going to get that playing for us here in a second. Oh, he's even got the sounds. Okay. So what you're looking at here is a conceptual rendering. Formal plans have not yet been drafted. This video was created to serve just as a starting point and will eventually be honed into a final design that both suits whatever location is chosen and is fully supported by the community. Now, as you watch the video, there's a few things to notice. First, we, we aim to preserve and incorporate any existing mature tree into the design. We love parks. Which will allow park users to play and rest and picnic throughout the garden, even if they're not there riding bikes. Friendly colors seen in the rainbow crosswalks and tan roadways would be used to enhance a fun and playful atmosphere for everybody. Now, it might not be obvious, but each traffic element you're seeing has an intentional purpose with specific learning objectives that directly address urban riding situations that students and anybody else would face when riding in the road. One example of that is the type S turn section you may have noticed, which has a built-in rock dodge. So it's fun, but it also forces riders to practice bike handling and obstacle avoidance. Because in real life, things like potholes or broken glass in the bike lane can lead to falls and serious collisions if a rider panics. Uh, there's intersections and crosswalks, which will teach kids about right-of-way and signaling. Uh, we have a great idea for a bus place structure, which would provide transit education so people can climb and have fun on it. But they'll also be able to practice mounting their bike on there. There's also a model parked car, which would again be fun to climb, but it'll also teach kids and other riders about the door zone, which in real life can cause severe and fatal collisions. So it's fun and it's also a lot of learning in there. Um, let's see, what else? There's a variety of signs, a roundabout, one-way and two-way traffic patterns, green bike lanes, bike boxes, merge points, sharrows. Basically, riders are going to be exposed to all kinds of modern street treatments. Train tracks and train safety will be included, which is important, especially in Antioch. Uh, outdoor classroom space will allow for group instruction as well as interpretive signs and discovery stations installed for independent, self-guided learning. Now, it's possible we could get a docked bike share station or some other type of bike fleet storage for, for group riding or public access. So that would be pretty cool. Whatever the final design process leads to, keep in mind that this facility is going to be a one-of-a-kind resource for the region, a unique amenity and innovative project that no other city has. So we're pretty excited about it. Um, okay, thank you, that's the video. So now we'll go to the PowerPoint slideshow. And I'll back up and kind of give you a little bit of background about what we're doing now, what Peter sort of alluded to earlier. There you go. So you can go just to the next slide. Thank you. So currently, Antioch's traffic safety education is provided in schools by Street Smarts Diablo, which is our safe routes to school program funded by CCTA. Now, our free programs are well-known and well-liked in Antioch. And our activities include bicycle and pedestrian safety assemblies. In fact, you see there on the screen, that's Mr. Beeps, who is a huge hit and a minor celebrity at most of Antioch's elementary schools. And in fact, I checked my notes before this presentation because I wanted to have my info. Mr. Beeps and Heads Up Safety Assemblies 52 times in Antioch schools alone since 2012. So we know Antioch and we know your schools and we love your kids and, and staff and faculty. So we really enjoy being out there. We also do walk. Um, and as Peter was saying, we've given out, again, I checked my notes, over 850 brand-new bike helmets to Antioch students alone since 2012. We also provide team driver education and we participate in community events. The Street Smarts team has earned an excellent reputation in Antioch and throughout the county, and we plan to be a lead partner in this project. Um, next slide, please. So creating a bicycle garden offers the opportunity to expand beyond the in-class lessons for more impactful safety education. Mr. Gangler, do you mind switching to the next? There we go, thank you. So we want to expand beyond the in-class lessons and get, get the kids out there practicing and doing. So, and the ultimate goal is that it's going to inspire more and safer, healthier bike trips to school and around town. And keep in mind that while organized classes will take place at the bike playground, people are going to be able to visit this park on their own and at no cost to practice and learn and have fun without staff or having to enroll in any kind of formal program. It'll also be a place, and I know schools will appreciate this, where parents and other drivers can refresh their own knowledge and skills, reminding everyone how to safely and legally share the road with cyclists and pedestrians. We've heard more times than I can count from, from school principals and staff that the big problem at schools are the drivers. So I think we can all, we all know that drop-off scene can be madness. And a great way to solve that is to have fewer cars in the first place. Uh, but beyond the education, this bicycle playground is also going to be a place where kids can just play and have fun and get exercise and be outside and use their imaginations and navigate a safe make-believe world. Kids will play with their bikes here and won't even realize that they're learning and building skills, gaining experience. skills, gaining experience, confidence, independence, and becoming safe road users for life as cyclists and as future drivers. In 30 years, these kids growing up in Antioch right now are gonna look back at the fun they had at this super cool, one-of-a-kind. Next slide, please. Thank you. Now, this project is gonna be guided by four equally important goals. Our team worked together to flesh out these concepts, and our first goal, we didn't even label them, and there's no order to them, but the first goal here is safety, of course. Our goal says, and this one is kind of a mouthful, but our, our vision here for, for safety goal is that this bicycle playground is gonna serve as the gold standard for bicycle safety education and working toward a regional Vision Zero goal of eliminating fatal and severe conditions involving cyclists and pedestrians. The bicycle garden will provide hands-on bicycle, pedestrian, and driver safety education designed for both programmed and independent learning in a comfortable, fun, permanent, car-free facility. Next slide. The next goal is community health, to increase and support community building, exercise, outdoor recreation options, and social and emotional well-being for youth and adults while instilling a culture of bicycling in Antioch and the region. Next slide. The next goal is climate change, to improve and reduce greenhouse gas emissions by inspiring community members to replace vehicle trips to and from schools and other community destinations with biking or walking. And our next goal, next slide, is of course equity, to ensure equitable, safe, and no-cost access to the facility for all members of the public, including youth and adults of all ages and abilities. Next slide, please. Programming opportunities, of course, are numerous. You can see here on this slide, there's all kinds of great ideas. School field trips would be such a dream. Family workshops, senior classes, inclusive recreation, community events, summer camps, bike repair workshops, et cetera, et cetera. We're gonna leave all kinds of programming, programming aspects to the Parks and Rec Department. So they'll be in charge of scheduling, advertising, permitting, hiring instructors, setting rules, et cetera. Next slide, please. So the big question is, of course, where is this park gonna be built? And the answer is, we don't know yet. We do know that with almost 8,000 elementary school students, the city of Antioch is certainly home to a very high number of potential park users. So determining the best location for the facility will involve listening to what's most important to the community and prioritizing various criteria. So tonight, we'd like to gain the district's formal support for the bicycle garden. Last night, as you heard, we did present to the city council and received the green light to keep working toward it. Our working group plans to present this project next to the Parks and Recreation Commission with the city in June, where we anticipate that an ad hoc committee will be formed, and this committee will be asked to examine possible locations and make recommendations. So to wrap it up, next slide, please. I'm gonna leave you with our little mood board we've started working on, to, just to give you a sense of what various design elements could look and feel like. We think it's gonna be a lot of fun. We're excited by the possibility of building an incredible bicycle garden here in Antioch, and we hope you'll support the concept and help us bring something great to the students and community of Antioch. So that's the conclusion of my presentation, and we end with a fun photo from Antioch Middle School from one of our Walk and Roll to School events, back when people were at school, a couple of years ago. So thanks for your attention, and please let us know if you have some questions or wanna know more.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much. This is, I think, the third time I've seen this presentation now, and it does not get old to see those young, the kiddos, as Dr. Lewis would say. And so I'm gonna do the same thing that I did before, go around, questions, comments, kind of get a gauge of how we all feel about continuing on this partnership, with the understanding that, you know, the big benefit, I think, from this group presenting to us and us kind of getting a gauge of how this board feels about continuing this partnership, is that it really does open up the opportunity for more funding opportunities, whether that be philanthropic, whether that be grants. It is very beneficial and strategic to be able to come to the table and say, look, it's not just C C T A, it's the, it's the city of Antioch, but it's also the Recreation Department and the school district and all these other entities. And again, keeping in mind that, I mean, there are kids, right? And so that's, our kids are gonna be the ones that are gonna be populating this park, wherever it is. And so I'm gonna go around, see questions, comments, see how you feel. And then also, you know, if there's, I know that trustee Rocha had, this was the first question that trustee Rocha asked is location. So if there's ideas as well, or, you know, any thoughts about kind of the next phase? Because this is gonna be going to Parks and Rec from the city side. And so there's definitely some like natural opportunities for us to either, like have people attend. That we can be involved. Ideas, that's welcome as well. And so with that, I will start off with trustee Dr. Lewis again.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you for the presentation. It was very informative, because I did, you know, sort of see some, some conversations about it, and sort of to get a presentation about it was really helpful. You know, overall, I think, you know, I think the program sounds great. Any, any way to provide an opportunity or activities for our kiddos is really helpful. You know, I think that, you know, I, I was 12 at one point, and I understand that, you know, sometimes activities and things like that, that are sponsored by whoever they're sponsored by, at 12, I don't really care. I just see the activities and I'm interested in the activities. However, I do have a couple of questions. So just in, in these conversations, so the role of the school district, as I understand it, would be to partner and provide, you know, access to the kiddos, it's not fiscal. Am I right in understanding that, or is, or is that conversation not been had yet?
That's where we're at right now. Yeah. There would be no fiscal responsibility or property responsibility from the school district. This is, we're looking at city parks, and we're looking to find grants. I think what we're looking for from the school district is support. Now, you know, if we're talking about what, what Kirsten, you know, maybe that's something that we can, we could talk further about. If we can get a fleet of bicycles that are held at the facility and, and kids can, you know, be on a field trip to go there, but, you know, this is, this is a long ways down when.
Of course.
With the programming. So, yeah, right now, we're just talking about support from the school district and...
And that support means sort of saying that this is a good idea?
Yeah, it's a great idea. Something that you guys would feel comfortable about with, you know, the, the kids in the schools and, and, you know, making it part of, you know, this is kind of an extension of the, of the kind of the safety curriculum that, that Kirsten is already providing, you know, with assemblies in the schools about safety. And so this is kind of that, okay, let's take what we're learning in the classroom and actually apply it, you know, for the appropriate age children, or kiddos, as you would say.
And, and then sort of, a, a sort of a follow-up question to that, in terms of the, you know, you mentioned the presentations and things like that that happens on campus. Who would be responsible for delivering those? You know, sort of as we're thinking this through, like, would that be a responsibility of the school, Parks and Recs, the city in general? Like, who would be responsible for, you know, developing those programs and rolling those programs out?
Yeah, so...
And I also understand if that conversation hasn't been had yet.
Yeah, it hasn't been had. I guess how I envision it is that Kirsten would continue to work with your, your principals in the, you know, on-campus type activities that are occurring, and then this would be kind of more of a city Parks and Rec thing that they could, and, and we would as a team, I would hope, with, with Street Smarts Diablo, work with the school district to develop, you know, if there is a curriculum that needs more, you know, outside or, you know, an outside classroom or something, that we could, you know, try and work that out and figure out a way to do that.
Okay. Right. That's all my questions.
So, you know, the authority is, one of our, one of our big priorities in the next few years is Vision Zero, which, as, as Kirsten mentioned, is, you know, really reducing or completely eliminating, if we can, pedestrian bike fatalities and, and injuries. And of course, our kids are a big part of that. And the other part is the climate change and just reducing vehicle trips to the schools. As, as I'm sure your principals tell you that, you know, congestion in the schools is just a, is a big problem, and the city may be telling you that as well during, during bell time. So we're looking for opportunities to, to work on both of those issues, both safety and, and congestion.
And there's also a health element as well, because if we, you know, if we get kiddos really early, and I think you mentioned that in the presentation as well. So I think that that, in my opinion, is, is equally sort of heavy. So thank you for the presentation. That's all my questions.
Wonderful. And, and so we'll move on to trustee, we'll work our way kind of backwards again. So trustee Rocha, any questions, comments, ideas? You know, this is a good opportunity, kind of like input into the process with understanding that there's gonna be a lot more opportunities throughout.
It's quite interesting, because in my time, I used to work what we used to call Safety Town, and we worked with youngsters, preschoolers, and, and actually, that was the whole thing. It's to plan out a little town where they can go around their tricycles. So I could see this in a much bigger pattern, and I don't know that you realize it, but our city is hooked up with patterns for bikes, because Tom Torikson started that at the very beginning when he was on the city council, and every development was put in so that we could all be connected. So I'm aware of all that. I, I approve of what you're trying to do. It just seems like it would have to be a large area in order for you encompass people to be able to drive, I mean, ride their bikes. And then I was also interested when you said seniors. Are you talking about me, senior, or senior high school?
We're talking about everybody, but we are talking about older adults as well.
Because I love that, because I wanna get back on a bike, but I'm afraid to get back on a bike. I, I might need to have the other ones that have the two-wheelers instead of the one single wheeler. I'm just telling you that I appreciate that, because I think seniors need to be, have the opportunity to do something similar for exercise and just getting out. So thank you very much, and I support the project.
Not, trustee Rocha, you have the energy of a, of a high school senior. You're not fooling around any of us.
Not, not only seniors, trustee, but we want it to be inclusive, so, so that we can include people with disabilities and learn about ADA issues associated with crossing these paths and things like that.
And trustee Rocha, you had said too, I just wanna kind of follow up, you said that it would have to be a big area. Off the top of your head, because I have very strong feelings about the, kind of where I'd want this to be. I'm just curious, what, off the top of your head, do you have any parks and locations that you think, because you're right, I mean, we do have a connected set of, like, pretty much every neighborhood can be, we could bike.
Exactly. That was the way, that's the way it was structured. Our housing should be connected. We could go all the way across, all the way to Martinez, I think, at this point. Piece of land, a park, I don't know that we have a park large enough. It just seems like it's gonna have, you need to quite a bit of land. To me, Contra Loma comes in, but that's not our responsibility. Contra Loma is another agency area, but they do have a large area that you can consider, and it's safe because there's no car traffic.
Yeah.
Kirsten, do you, Kirsten, do you wanna talk about maybe the size that we're talking about?
Yeah, you know, the video rendering that you saw, I'm not on mute, Jim, I know. The video rendering you saw was created for a space that's about five acres. So it's not that big, but it is big enough to make it fun and have all those different features you saw. All that was drawn through scale on five acres. So it's, you can fit a lot in on five acres, which, you know, we, we did a scouting of all the parks, and we, man, Antioch has great parks, not, not only those amazing pathways. I didn't realize how many pathways there are, which is fantastic. But the parks are amazing, too. They're, we looked around and we thought, well, that would work there, it would work there. So it's, I mean, Antioch is ideal.
And that's been a part of the working group conversations as well. I mean, the consensus at this point is really that it's, this has to be community-driven, but I just kind of selfishly wanted to know what trustee Rocha, because, I mean, I think we all, off the top of our head, have thoughts, so, interesting. And so with that, trustee Hernandez, thoughts, questions, comments?
Yeah. What an awesome presentation. I think something that people don't know about me is I'm such a huge fan of public transit in general. You know, prior to the pandemic, every day I would ride my bike over to the e-bike station and then commute over to San Francisco to work, and that's what, that's how I got to work, and then I'd hop, you know, either walk to work or hop onto Muni. And I just think that anything that reduces the amount of cars on the road, that reduces the amount of car usage, is better for society in general. So I'm happy and excited for projects like these. The first question I have is, a very big, broad question is, you know, I'm curious as to, you know, how this type of initiative kind of fits into the, the greater transit ecosystem that you're trying to build and the vision, the long-term vision for continuing to push for these kinds of things.
Let me take a shot at that. So, and then Kirsten, you, you fit in. I think ultimately, transit is changing. I think with COVID, you know, it's, it's, well, even prior to COVID, you know, there's been a big, there, there's, there's been an aggressive change towards how transit operates and its effectiveness, especially in more suburban communities. And so there's been a lot of more on-demand type things and things like that. So I think the more that we can get people back on their bikes that can, that can ride to transit stops or ride to, one of the things we're looking at, C C T A, is shared mobility hubs, an actual hub where there's opportunities for shared transfers, either from bike share or car share or park and ride to transit. So, you know, bicycling is, is that next step above walking. You know, there's a, there's certain distance people will walk to get to a transit hub, which increases by double or triple or even four times, maybe five times, for, for bicyclists. And Contra Costa County, and especially Antioch and East County, has a great bicycle network as far as paths, bike paths and, and trails. So I think it just feeds into the opportunity for using public transit and cars. But we have to make, we have to have children grow up to feel safe, to be able, and now we've got opportunities even for older adults through, you know, e-bikes, assist bikes to, you know, to take that on later in life, even though they're not in great shape like me. So I think it just feeds into it perfectly, trustee, that, 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 you know, it's gonna just help people move away from their vehicle, their single, single occupant vehicles.
Yeah, and I would only add on to that, that, well, basically, we put it into the goals that we are trying to create a culture of bicycling, and, you know, I mean, if you look at the climate situation, something's gotta give, and, you know, the young people seem to have it in their heads a little bit better than some of us who are, you know, drive, drive, drive everywhere. So if we can really foster this culture of biking and make it cool and make it fun and kids get their independence, you know, it, it stays with you for a lifetime. And with the rise of e-bikes, you know, that's, that's a game changer, too, so.
Yeah, thank you. I really, you know, appreciate that insight, and definitely, you know, as I think about, you know, how beneficial something like this could be to our, to our school district, you know, one of the, the things that we get a lot of messages about are, you know, like those pickup and drop-off times and the traffic issues at our school sites, and oftentimes we're, we're trying to think of, you know, how do we, you know, get more cars in here? How do we change the world for these cars when the solution may be, how do we get less cars here? And that can be, get more kids feeling comfortable, safe, and excited about riding their bikes to school. And so thank you for this presentation, and I'm very excited about it.
You're welcome. And I will just add on to what you just said there about parents complaining, and, you know, we've done surveys over the years of parents through our Street Smarts program, and, you know, it's kind of a vicious loop where we say, why don't you let your children walk or bike to school? And they say, there's too many cars, so I drive them. So, you know, what are you gonna do? If the kids are asking to walk and bike... If the kids are asking to walk and bike because it's fun and they know how to do it and they have these skills to show off, you know, maybe that's a start.
Definitely.
And also, too, I think this would be a good time to note, too, if folks who are listening in might not be super up to date on what's going on at the city council. There has been a lot of emphasis and prioritization of creating more bike-friendly, you know, roadways. I know that there's plans to pretty much completely renovate L Street from the freeway down to the water. And so, you know, again, just thinking about like where we fit into all this. We have the kiddos that would occupy these parks. But that there are a lot of kind of ongoing city efforts, whether that be through youth programming or, you know, maintenance and renovation of the streets. So we really are going to be in a unique opportunity where the, I think kids are going to be, want to bike more because they're going to have these dedicated bike lanes that are, you know, make it a little bit easier to bike. And so this kind of feeds into that. And trustee Heck, questions, comments, thoughts?
Comments, ditto on whatever you said. Absolutely, you know, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a lot of possibilities. I don't know the details yet. The district doesn't know the details, but I think it's well worth exploring. Because obviously, riding a bike is, I think, a lot better than doing all other options. So if you can do that and give us some parameters that we can work with, fantastic. I appreciate that. Thank you for being here this evening.
Wonderful. And so, you know, this is just a public presentation, so we're not voting on anything tonight. But I'm curious, and I apologize, I hadn't talked to Peter or Kirsten about this before, but is there something that you all suggest that would formalize this support? Or is this kind of the consensus that was just reached now? Does that work and then just me being continued part of the work group? Or what do you think would be best?
I would, Kirsten, jump in, but I would say probably if, if you want to formally engage, I mean, it's kind of the city's driving this at this point. So we've got feedback from the city last night to kind of continue the process through Parks and Rec. There, they, the direction was for them to form an ad hoc committee, which would engage the public. So, you know, maybe a formal role in that ad hoc committee would be appropriate. You know, I leave it up to you, president, to, you know, kind of think about that and how you want, how do you want to move that forward? I think certainly the support of the school district is important. And your views on the proper location are important. So, and that's kind of what the role of the Parks and Rec is, is to come back with, you know, three to five recommended sites, you know, for what would be the best location. So I think if the school district has strong feelings about what those sites might be, maybe to engage in that process would be the best way to move forward. And then just to show support to the city, I don't know if it's appropriate for maybe just a letter from the school district that said, you know, we have this presentation tonight. We, you know, we think it's a great idea and support the recommendation that they made last night to continue the process moving forward is probably the most appropriate response at this point.
Yeah, it has, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I unmuted myself and it's super loud when I do.
Well, I think the superintendent has a comment to make. I didn't want to.
I do, and I was saying the same thing, that probably it sounds like there's consensus of support. I would be happy to write a letter on behalf of the Board of Education saying that we had this. My question, and it's really low level at this point, but I loved that you threw in equity. And I'm wondering, you know, not all kids have bikes. So what's the plan for that? You know, we don't want to take kids to field trip or just have kids in the neighborhood. We don't want to create a system where there's those who have and those who don't. So is there a plan that you're thinking of or?
Should I answer that before Dr. Lewis wants to add on? Did you want to add on to that question, Dr. Lewis?
No, I was going to say, it sort of tags along to sort of a conversation that we've been having before. So there is money out there. So, for example, I worked with an organization in Oakland, and part of the role there was to get bicycles for those returning home from prison. And there are grant monies available for specifically for those types of activities. So when we have conversations about having a grant right here, I know we're not having that conversation now. But when we're having, these are the types of activities that would come up, where the district could take lead and say, okay, we're going to write a grant and we're going to provide, you know, sort of that level of oversight. So there's a lot of, I don't want to say a lot, but there is funding out there available for exactly what you're talking about, Superintendent Nellin.
If I may suggest, this evening, my understanding is, this is a presentation, and we as a board are not going to make any decisions this evening. So we can share thoughts back and forth. And if the superintendent wants to pursue it further, that's great. But I don't think as a board, we're taking a position of yea or nay. So that's all.
I, oh, I'm sorry.
I can jump in.
I have a question. I saw bikes lined up, were your intention to have bikes available there? So when the children came there or people would came, they would use those bikes. Is that your intention?
Well, there's a few, a few ideas that are possible for this. I mean, ideally, yes, there would be a fleet of bikes that people could either, you know, like a docked bike share. I don't know if you've ever had the chance to use Lime Bike or Jump Bike or Bay Wheels in the city or around the world where they have bike share. So one option would be to have a bike share situation. Those bikes are typically for adult-sized people. But the idea of having a fleet, some kind of a storage facility for a fleet of adjustable bikes that children could use, all different types of kids, maybe some adaptive bikes as well for people who need different types of bikes. Yes, we would love to have a fleet of bikes, especially for field trips and things like that. You know, I'm kind of an idea person. People work with me, I always throwing ideas. But sometimes there's some good ideas out there. And, you know, I mean, you can have different types of, you know, if you had a field trip, you'd have some little, you could throw in some different types of things, like a big wheel. And these are the kids who are drivers and the bikers are interacting with them. So there's a lot of ideas and, you know, this is down the road, obviously. But yeah, there's a lot of ideas for having fleets of bikes and having everybody biking. Some people could be walking, you know, pedestrians are part of the scene. So having people share and take turns, you know, it could work. And this is where, you know, there are a lot of parks in Antioch and several of them do a but district properties. And so there may be an opportunity for a partnership where maybe bikes are stored on the other side of the fence to one of the schools or something. And, you know, there's definitely partnership ideas there. But yeah, we want to make it accessible and equitable for everybody. And we know that not everybody has bikes. There was a question at the city council last night about kids on scooters or skateboards and would they be able to use it? And the answer is yes. People on scooters or skateboards are considered pedestrians and the park would be available for everybody.
So Kirsten mentioned it, but one of the, one of the discussions in our working group was this idea of a storage facility of some kind where we could get a fleet of bikes that are available for field trips and for kids that don't have bikes. And that would certainly be ideal. So that's something that we'll be looking at in potential site location. And of course, you know, we'd have to find money to cover the cost of that and have city approval to do all that. But, I mean, that would be great. And what Kirsten said about adaptive bikes, you know, to make, to make the facility inclusionary for everybody is another thing. And, you know, the more we can educate people with disabilities about being, having these mobility devices available to them to ride bikes is, you know, just another element of this that could make it very successful.
And then too, you know, I mean, the way that I see it, where we're at in this process is that this, you know, the clear support that the board has in the letter that the superintendent is going to write kind of on our behalf, codifying that. That's really, I think, what's going to be able to open up, you know, this, the working group and all of the different actors who are involved in driving this process. It's going to open up opportunities to, okay, well, maybe there is just like a natural partnership with like Lime or with the GoBikes or with something like that. You know, these kind of funders do like to see that there is support. And so I think that this is really exciting to me because now, you know, it's kind of getting a little bit less conceptual and it's like, okay, well, how, how, let's, let's think about what bikes are going to be there, you know, what is actually going to be available. So, yeah, and then again, too, I mean, the city, I mean, we all pay sales taxes into the sales tax that is for youth programming. So that's another thing, too, you know. And again, just, I think that formalizing this partnership as we are doing tonight and we will continue to do. You know, I will definitely bring back to the board as discussion items. I'll bring it up. I've typically been bringing this up during my comments at the end and I'll continue to do that. But anytime that there's something like, you know, I know that the superintendent has signed on with grants with the city before, you know, I mean, it's very typical. Co-applicants, different, different opportunities. And so I'll bring that back to this board as that progresses. And, you know, this is going to be, this is just the first step in a kind of a long process. So, you know, over the next however long this takes. Hopefully, it's quick, but the wheels of government move kind of slow. But I'll bring that back to the board at each step. And then, of course, to you guys, I mean, the, my colleagues, you know, feel free to shoot me ideas or if anything comes up, we could talk about it during our meeting. Or, you know, if you have comments or questions throughout, then you send me an email and I'll relay that back to the work group. And trying to do my best to kind of communicate, I am kind of a bridge between the city and the district. So kind of unique in that respect. And so if there are no other questions, I don't know if our presenters just want to end on anything. Thank you so much. This was definitely longer than the presentation last night. But as you can tell, we're all really excited for any opportunities for our kids, especially as we're entering into, you know, kind of new world of education as we're reopening.
You know, I will just say that, you know, and I'll call you Elliot, I apologize, president, householder. We've had a couple of these working group meetings and there, and we have commented, there's been so much amazing energy over this topic. You know, quite often, some of these work group meetings are just kind of, Elliot, you know, how are we going to get this done? But, I mean, this is something that both the city and, and president, householder, there's been, and staff and Kirsten's, you know, team have been so excited over. And there's so much energy. So we're super excited on this, really want to get this done and get it going. So we really appreciate your time tonight and, and your comments. And like I said, we just want to, we want to make this happen in Antioch.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thanks for your time and your enthusiasm. It's the spark we need to, you know, make this happen. So appreciate it.
We appreciate you. This is so exciting. I'm like, I'm unreasonably excited. I don't know if you can tell by how silly I'm smiling, but I'm really excited for our next Thursday. So much. And Superintendent Nellin, you know, me, you and Dr. Lewis, if we need to collaborate on that letter, we could do that and then, you know, we'll pass the message along. We'll figure it out offline.
All right. Thank you so much.
Have a great meeting.
Good night.
All right. Next up, consent calendar. Is there anything that folks want to pull, either for a discussion or a separate vote? We do have a lot of stuff on this consent calendar, but I do just think it's important to note that these are continuing contracts. And typically, we do have a lot more items at this time of the year, you know, getting prepared for reopening. So if there's anything we want to vote on separately or questions or comments on, please. Trustee Rocha.
Are you going by each one of us or do you want me to just throw out?
You can just throw them out.
Okay, I've got just two. And it's not that I'm not against it, I just want more information. I think we should share that information. It's on our consent calendar, which is R and S.
Okay. Anybody else have any other items? All right. Do you want to start off? We'll start off with R, trustee Rocha.
Yeah, I just wanted to learn, and I should have asked the superintendent earlier. I don't like to bring these up with a surprise. But it just seems interesting, the connection with the learning centers. And that's the one on R. It's in agreement with Bay Area Community Resources on learning centers. Are they similar to what we have already or separate? Or how are they working together?
They're actually very similar, but they started prior to our learning centers because we use them as pilot programs early on at some of our schools that have high population with need for in-person learning. And so we started with BACR and we've expanded that using our after-schools money grant, which we couldn't utilize prior.
The other major, there's one other major difference in that our learning centers do have certificated staff as well in the learning centers, not all of our BACR learning centers do.
Okay, that's the difference. All right, but they do have similar students that we're trying to attract, to support. Okay, that answers that. I just wanted to bring it out because it seemed like it was similar, but I couldn't remember what the difference was. And I think the staffing makes a difference.
I asked too, just on this one, just because I just noticed this too. It says goal six, and I'm assuming that would be now goal four, right, for LCAP? Or would it still technically be six because it's like going backwards?
Yes, because we haven't approved our new LCAP. So forward, it would definitely be goal four.
Okay. And I, number, letter S.
Okay, the other one was number S. And that's the service agreement with the JLW Consulting. It has to do with mental health or health services. I just wanted a more explanation. I'm sorry I didn't ask you sooner.
I'm happy to say. I'm happy to answer that. So this consultant has been working with us for a number of years. And what, we've been so grateful to get some funding, grant funds through our different health agencies, and this one in particular is Sutter. So Sutter is providing the support. And what this consultant will do, she works with two of our in-house TOSSAs, Teachers on Special Assignment Around Social Emotional. And the focus of this particular contract is going to be on re-entering school because we are anticipating that there will be tremendous needs, not just from our students, but also our staff. And so she's working with our social emotional team to prepare for that reopening.
And when you, when Ms. Abara says Sutter, she means Sutter.
Sutter. Sorry, I should make that.
And most of this consultant's, she's also written the mental health grants that have, you know, we have 10 clinicians coming in. So part of her job is also to work on social emotional grants that she sees.
Right, and in fact, this is separate, but Kaiser just released a large grant that she will be applying for on our behalf. So she'll be preparing that grant. And if awarded, we will receive $200,000 that can go toward additional mental health services. So we're looking forward to, hoping we get that one.
I'm glad I asked. I find this very interesting since we're all very aware of this emotional issues and the kids, students and teachers coming back and that we are preparing. And it sounds like we're on a good stand. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'm glad you asked too, trustee Rocha, because that sparked a thought in my own mind or a question. Ms. Abara had, you had noted that, you know, in terms of reopening and our kind of the anticipated needs as they relate to that. So would it be fair for me to just kind of have in the back of my mind that I might see another addendum depending on what the need is when we reopen? that I might see another addendum depending on what the need is when we reopen? Because that's one of the things, like, I'm always like, why we keep seeing addendum and addendum and addendum? So it's helpful for me to maybe know that this might be something, depending on what that need is, that we might see again.
I'd say yes. And then we also, you'll see addendums as we continue to receive, um, additional funding through, whether it's John Muir, Sutter, or Kaiser. And so in some cases, that helps extend her services to our district. So that's why you see repeated addendums as, as we receive additional funding from those, um, agencies.
That's, that's super helpful to know too, especially since, you know, the, I wanna say the dust is starting to settle with all these different funding from the state and federal government, but that we might continue to see these kind of modifications.
Yeah, they've been very supportive of us and we appreciate them tremendously.
All right, um, so it doesn't sound like we wanna vote on those separately.
No, no, are you ready for a motion?
So ready for a motion.
Okay, I'm moving, I'm moving in support of the consent items from A all the way to Y. Um, and, and I said, okay, I'm putting it on, as a motion to support. Thank you.
Trustee Rocha has made a motion to approve consent calendar as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dr. Lewis. Uh, Ms. Capillaro, may we please have a roll call?
Uh, yes, Trustee Hack.
I approve.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President, Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the consent calendar in its entirety passes 5-0.
Wonderful, moving right along. Action items, um, we have one, our Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant Plan, our ELO. Folks will hopefully remember, we have been talking about this last couple meetings. So, um, I'm assuming this goes to our Associate Superintendent, Ms. Romeo.
Yes, it is. Um, Mr. Gangler, can you pull up the PowerPoint? Thank you. So, as the board is aware, we did, um, brought the ELO plan. This actually is, that's not the right, um, presentation. From the last meeting. Go to the next page and let me see if there, maybe it's just the front page. Yes, okay, good. So it looks like just the front page was from our budget meeting because part of this the board has seen before. Um, this is, um, our Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant. And under COVID-19, there was state funding that came to Antioch Unified, um, through the in-person instruction grant and Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant. The Extended Opportunities Grant is in two parts. One is, is to support paraprofessional, um, opportunities and support here in the district and then just a variety of ways that our funding can be used. Next slide, please. So, under the grant, we must use at least 85% of the ELO grant for expenditures, expenditures related to in-person. And as I stated, 10% of the grant must be used on paraprofessionals. If we, um, were staying in distance learning and we hadn't prepared the learning center, then an additional 15% would have been able to be used for distance learning as well. Next slide, please. So, as, um, the board's aware, there are seven supplemental instruction and support strategies that we can plan this to, the use of this money. Extended instruction time, accelerated progress to close learning gaps, integrated supports, student supports to address other barriers to learning, um, community learning hubs, credit deficient, additional academic services, and then training for school staff. So, as we looked at the strategies, we've outlined here, um, the, um, supports that we would put in place. This is one-time money, so this, um, grant must be expended by June 30th. And I'll talk a little bit at the end about our reporting, um, obligations. So we have numerous summer school programs. We have after-school programs at each site. Um, the SDC additional academic support that we've put in place this year, where students come in the afternoon as well as having distance learning in the morning. Um, we have intervention, we are planning intervention teachers at each elementary school to support small group intervention in, in both MAP and reading. Um, class size reduction at our secondaries in our core curriculum areas. Um, primarily focused on English, mathematics, and ELD. Some of the barriers, um, the board's been talking about, and that's around our council that our students are going to have when they return. Additional computer technicians, because as we have put, um, all of these technology devices into, um, into action, um, there has to be people that can take care of them. Um, and then again, uh, technology upgrades. Our academic support teachers are in our learning centers and they facilitate right now our in-person learning. There's additional PPE that we have provided based on our in-person instruction. Next slide, Joe. Um, we are running Edgenuity, which is an online credit recovery program at the high school level, starting in the summer. And we have iReady as well. Um, we are recommending bilingual aids at each elementary site and dual immersion aids as our programs continue to grow. And then finally, a variety of training for school staff, um, around our, our various programs. So the in-person instruction and, um, opportunities grant, 50% of that allocation is being distributed by June 1st, and that's why we're here in front of you this evening. We have to, um, adopt an Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant Plan. We also, and what I have to do is, um, provide the, uh, application for in-person, which is, will be finalized tomorrow. Um, we have to August for remaining grant funds to be distributed. And again, those come directly from the state. We must use all the funds by August 31st of 2022 on both grants. And then a final report is due on, on the expenditures, the expenditure portion of how we spent our funds by December 1st of 2022. And with that, I would ask the board to approve, um, the ELO grant this evening.
Wonderful. This is, uh, really great to, uh, see this information again and really appreciate the work that everybody put into this and, um, really just taking the time to walk us through this and listening to some of our feedback. I feel very comfortable with where we're at with this. Um, obviously, again, with the understanding that, you know, we're gonna have to talk about this stuff over the next, uh, year. And so this is gonna continue to come up again. This is our plan, but it's a plan. Um, and so with that, I'll just go around and ask everybody if they, um, have any questions. So, Trustee Dr. Lewis, questions or comments?
Uh, no, I think it's, it's, it's pretty forward, uh, straightforward. I think, uh, you know, I, you know, the, the conversation that's constantly on my mind is, you know, when are we gonna have that formal conversation around reopening? And it sounds like that plan or that request is going to be complete tomorrow and then we'll have follow-up conversation, I'm assuming, uh, around what that looks like. Um, you know, I think the ELO plan looks tight, you know, uh, the parameters. I totally understand that as well, so, you know, I'm fine with it.
Trustee Rocha?
I'm very excited about it. I'm glad that we're getting down to it and I know we have to approve it today. Uh, so I'm ready to put a motion in, but if you wanna ask the rest, it's fine. And this goes along with what we just heard about previous on the mental health and the health of our students and our, our teachers. So I'm happy for the process. Thank you.
And Trustee Rocha, if you wanna go ahead and, and make that motion to continue.
I move approval of the, uh, ELO plan, general plan for our summer program.
All right, so motion to approve the ELO grant plan made by Trustee Rocha. To make things easier, I will second that motion, Trustee, Householder. Um, and so, I'm gonna ask Trustee Hernandez, uh, any questions or comments before we go to a roll call vote?
Um, I only have just one thought that I was, that was going through my head, only very tangentially kind of related, um, to this as I was kind of re-looking at this. Um, something that I do in my head as I'm looking through the expenditures is, is I kind of, in my mind, calculate what percentage of our total is that. And so something that would be interesting to me, if it's not too much trouble, um, is to see what percentage of our funds going towards those different, uh, seven support categories. I think it'd be, uh, good to see where those are distributing 'cause I think sometimes those details can kind of get lost in these big numbers that we're seeing. Otherwise, I think this looks really great and I, I thank you for all the work that you put into this.
And the breakdown in those categories for purposes of this grant are in the actual template that was, um, attached to the board as well. So those, um, are broken down a little bit more, but it obviously doesn't include the numbers from all of our other budget resources or revenues.
Yeah. Uh, Trustee Hack, any questions, comments, concerns?
It's an action item and I'm comfortable with the explanation, so I'm ready to go.
And then just so folks in the, who might be listening in know too, you know, this is, we've seen this a couple talent, times now, so we've really planned, understanding that it is a plan. And so if it seems like we're not asking a ton of questions, it's because we've really, uh, tried to play a more active role in driving this. So, um, with that, I would ask Ms. Capillaro to, uh, do a roll call.
Uh, yes, Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President, Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant Plan passes 5-0.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on. Items for information, discussion, and action by the board. Both of them are, uh, from Trustee Rocha, but the first is the City District Standing Committee. I think this is so interesting, given the presentation, um, that we had. And so with that, I'm gonna pass it over to Trustee Rocha if you wanna, um, give us some background. I feel like we all kind of know.
I've been concerned about this and I've brought it up and we haven't seemed to take any action on it. On top of that, we have a direction coming from the council that there is a big plan put on for youth activities. So I believe this is a very important piece that we need to be connected. At this point, I'm gonna push this item. I'm putting my name in for this position. It is an action item, so I'm putting Mary Rocha in for the subcommittee, one of the subcommittee members of the city and school, um, committee.
Yeah, um, Superintendent Anel, can you refresh my memory? Did we just consensus? 'Cause it is an ad hoc or do, should we, would it be better to formalize it in a vote? I'm just like, based on what we think at this time.
I think whenever.
Can I ask for a second before you could make it into discussion?
Oh, yeah, I'll second it. Second, Trustee Rocha. The motion for her to become a part of the city, uh, school subcommittee.
So the history is, I believe, um, President, Householder, you were on this as well as, um, then-President, um, Gibson Gray. That was the last appointment. And the board had, um, made several comments to the fact that they wanted to make sure that they were having a board member who'd been on the board for a while and somebody who was just coming onto the board. So they were making sure that there was a legacy moving forward. Um, and now that you're, you have a role with the city too, I think that kind of, you know, is, is great as well. But, um, since then, we didn't take any formal action. I, I really think it's up to the board if, if they just want consensus or, you know, if they really want it clean, um, they can go ahead and do a, a motion and a second and, and a vote.
Well, before doing roll call, let's kind of keep talking. So we have, this is the motion, it's our first motion. I seconded it to have, uh, Trustee Rocha be one of, you know, the two people. I mean, it could only, I mean, we could just say it's just Trustee Rocha representing us. I think that will depend. So I don't know, do folks have other, um, thoughts or questions, particularly looking at our new folks? Trustee Dr. Lewis?
Uh, I would be interested. If Trustee Hernandez is interested, he can, he can do it as well. I mean, you know, I think it's, 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 it's important for us to have that dialogue, uh, and representation. Um, you know, but again, I'm happy to do it. I, yeah, I feel comfortable with, uh, Trustee Hernandez as well. So either of us, uh, you know, would be fine.
Yeah, I think, um, one of the thoughts I'm having is, yeah, maybe, maybe cleaner to just kind of do, 'cause we got two people on there, so might as well, you know, have the two people and kind of come to that consensus at the same time or that motion vote at the same time. Um, I'm also interested into it, but I also, um, you know, haven't thought through, you know, what makes the most sense. I think there's a lot of really great arguments for getting, uh, Vice President Lewis on there. So I don't know if people have thoughts on that as, um, as well.
What I thought I had is that Mary is very interested in it. So I'd like her to be the first choice, I suppose. If somebody else wants to join her, that's fantastic.
Yeah, I think it really is just between, uh, Trustee Hernandez and Trustee Dr. Lewis. And so for me, I mean, I don't have a preference either way. Um, for context, let me think, who is on? I, I believe it is still Councilmember Orgachak, who is on the, from the city side. And I wanna say it's Councilmember Torres Walker. So I think that they did something similar, kind of like a newer council member and kind of a more veteran one. Um, and so, yeah, I mean, I think it's really up to you all.
So how often, uh, does the committee meet?
We met once.
We met once.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, can I say that it used to be we would meet once a month on a regular basis? Because there's a lot of issues that we need to share. And one of my, this, and this is why I keep bringing it up, is that I hear a lot from the city, but if we're not included, how can a plan be done for the youth in, in turn? We've got the youth, sure, the city does too, but we have the majority and then we have the spaces, or shall I say the buildings? So I, I think that we need to go hand in hand as to how we approach the future.
So it sounds like maybe the cleanest way, since you had a first and a second, is finish that?
Yeah.
And the next one?
Yeah.
And then just one more question. How long is the term? Sorry.
Uh, we did it for a year in the past.
For a year, okay.
Yeah, and I mean, it's gonna be as needed. I think that there, sorry, there's a lot to discuss as Trustee Rocha noted. Um, and I think that this, like, imaginary agenda keeps getting bigger and bigger. And so this'll be really great, um, too, because I could just kick people, like, the, the council members will be like, those are the ones, you know, whoever it is, Trustee Rocha and whoever. I agree with you, Trustee Rocha. So with that, let's vote on this first, let's do a roll call on this first motion, which is to, um, a, I don't know if it's a, I don't even, 'cause it's an ad hoc, appoint Trustee Rocha to the city school subcommittee. So Ms. Capillaro, can you do roll call?
Uh, yes. Trustee Hack?
Absolutely.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President, Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to appoint, uh, Trustee Rocha as the first member of the city district ad hoc committee passes 5-0.
And you know, just me thinking about it for like the last five seconds, I actually think that, uh, Trustee Dr. Lewis would, um, be my preference for the simple fact of if we need to agendize something, it would be very helpful for me to have somebody where it's not gonna be a Brown Act violation, but in the agenda meetings can just say, hey, this is gonna be an item for discussion. Um, and I mean, also, there's so many opportunities for all of us and I think we are all involved in the city in definitely different ways. I think what this is, this committee specifically is, is, uh, when we're talking about youth programming, when we're talking about, you know, maybe these potential grant opportunities, things like that, um, it's really just like a formalized space for that. And so, um, and I think that the meetings are really determined, meeting times are determined. We did a doodle poll and it was kind of painful to get the dates locked down, but we did it. And so I assume that's what would be done. And then, uh, Ms. Anel, would you be on it still too? Okay.
Yeah, so it would be myself and the city manager.
Exactly. Well, I would like to then, if there's, if it's okay, I'm not seeing anybody like jumping out at the screen right now. I'm gonna make a motion, uh, to appoint Trustee Dr. Lewis as the second member to the city school subcommittee. Dr. Lewis as the second member to the city school subcommittee. I made that motion. Seconded by trustee Hernandez. Trustee Dr. Lewis, before we take the vote, do you want to, just want to make sure.
Absolutely. I mean, I'm interested. I, you know, it's, it's one of those things where I think, you know, trustee Hernandez would be a great fit as well. So, you know, that's why I was thinking about the term. So that way, I think that, you know, this first year, you know, if, if, if everybody agrees, you know, I'll be, I'll sit on it. And then next year, we can have trustee Hernandez on there as well, either in my seat or in, in, in Mary, I'm sorry, trustee Rocha's seat. So, you know, I'm, I'm fine with it as long as, yeah, I'm fine with it. And I appreciate the, the suggestion.
That's what, that's what I was thinking too. I thought it would be kind of, I don't know, it just makes sense to me to have it kind of be rotating and hopefully we'll be meeting a lot more regularly. We met once. It's so funny. But anyways, Ms. Cavalero, could you do a roll call?
Yes, trustee Hack?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to appoint Vice President Lewis as the second member of the city district ad hoc committee passes 5-0.
Wonderful. Yay. All right, moving on. Item B, high school gym air conditioning. We've talked about this a couple times sprinkled throughout the last couple of meetings. And so, yeah, I think we wanted to kind of come to a decision about what we want to do. I don't know. Trustee Rocha, you take.
Well, you know, I've been traveling to all these different schools and I just feel so bad when I go back and look at our own high school and then to know that the air conditioning on both Deer Valley and Antioch High is not there. So it's, it's sad. And again, I'll bring it up again, I'm sure people don't want to hear this, but the whole idea of us trying to have that bond issue to take care of that side, which is all the new schools lost by 54 votes. And that's ridiculous. And look at what we're facing, the lack of painting and all, et cetera. So getting back to the air conditioning, I didn't, I wasn't on top of it when the measure C came aboard, not realizing that we were going to cover air. And it should have been because our youth students are in there and we also have our games all the time. And then, I mean, it's, it's an issue. So I guess my question is going to be, I know that I had heard that we're going to put. On the track without falling down in some of those potholes. So I think we really need to look at, at our structures. I mean, wanting to educate students, but it's the other to keep them safe and, and at least healthy in environment that they can work on. So I put it, I'm asking the question of what would be the cost, the estimate cost for these?
Okay, so if I could jump in, sometime ago, not this board, but a prior board did approve 1.6 million per year. And there is a resolution on file that could go in at, over the years, as funding was tight, they have only funded that to, for most years, it's been around $800,000. And as you can guess, that doesn't meet all of the needs. We have started getting estimates on our fields, some of our, what it would take to do our HVAC. HVAC does require DSA approval. So that is going to be a project that, you know, may cost a little bit more and may have some time and design costs related to it.
Can you share, can you share what DSA stands for?
Oh, I'm sorry, Department of State Architect. Anytime you make significant structural changes to a school district building, you have to go through the state architect department. So I will be, I am putting those things together and will be prepared to bring those forward to the board at a future date. It does have tie into the budget and I'll be right with you, Mr. Lewis. It does tie into the budget in the fact that we are apportioning or recommending in the LCAP next, next board meeting, I believe it's $800,000. And obviously, as we start looking at the other funding sources that we talked about last week, once we know the prices attached to each of these projects and we prioritize them, it's not all going to be done in one year. But we do actually have a five-year plan. It's just our five-year plan has way more projects and it doesn't account for the things that come up on a year-to-year basis. So I hope that helps a little bit.
Yes, thank you very much. I just wanted to bring it up for attention and that's my idea. Thank you.
It sounds like what you were asking is for, you would like an estimate of how much it would be, just to set the intention. And so what we need, from the rest of the board, that you would also like an estimate on how much that would be. Is that correct? Did I capture that, trustee Rocha?
I hope so. I do hope that there is some direction from our board that we try to look at these items, especially right now, since it's the big, you know, I mean, I just need some support on it. Yeah.
So trustee Rocha, you know, if I, if I may, so I was just going to hop in and say, so some of the funding, as I understood, the budget conversation last week, will be earmarked for facilities, if, if I'm not mistaken. I remember us having that conversation firstly. So secondarily, you know, I'm in support of getting sort of a breakdown of those estimates as long as we're inclusive. I mean, I know that, you know, you're passionate about the gym as a former athlete, gym, but as a former athlete, as a former football player too. You know, I also want to make sure, as you mentioned, like park and some of those other facilities get estimates as well. So that way we're inclusive. And as we get that sort of, sort of more complete list, we can then sort of look and see what we're able to tackle. So that will be the only caveat that I would add.
Yeah, well, I understand. In fact, I think Antioch Middle School, if I remember, and Deer Valley and Antioch High are the three that need the help with the air conditioning. And it's almost the heating. It's a whole system that is so old, where you have water running through the pipes and that's how you heat your building. That's kind of weird.
And then Deputy Superintendent Romero, I know we were going to have a conversation, I'm sorry, I know last week we had a conversation, I was just checking my notes, around insurances for once we get those new things installed, you know, sort of like the home insurance. And I know, again, it's pie in the sky and may not exist. But if possible, if we could get some conversation about that and see if that's an option moving forward as well.
And along with the ideas that the board has brought forth, I've met with most of the principals who have also, you know, given me a list of their needs, some of which may be safety needs that we need to put in there as well.
But we've been bringing this back to the board and I do think I see enough heads nodding about some estimates and we will provide those as well when we prioritize. Yeah. Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, I definitely am on, on board with looking at any kind of estimates. And I don't know what are different like data structures or things that we might have. But if there's any data or information that is easily available, that gives us some kind of sense of potential like student impact on this, or, you know, like, you know, how many students on average are in these gyms? What's like the average temperature of these places? What's the percentage of the day that these facilities are in use? Anything like that are things that I think would be really helpful with this conversation. But I definitely wouldn't want us to like go out of our way to have to generate this if it's not easily available. So if there's anything like that that you can think of, it'd be great to have that.
Yeah, I think even in like if this, because I'm, because I'm just thinking we're going to have to, I mean, our board budget conversations, our final adoption of a budget is happening very soon. So maybe if it's possible, we could get this information on Friday board letter so that we can come then into our budget discussion for our next meeting, having that kind of information available. And I think it would be really helpful to see population of the school and as well as what that project is, whether it's the track, whether it's the, you know, gym. That would be very helpful for me to know because then, yeah, I think in terms of the prioritization or how much we really need to kind of put dollars behind our priorities. So it would be very helpful.
I'm happy to do that. I just want to caution the board that there may not be the estimates prior to the June 23 meeting on things that need DSA approval and we have to hire experts on. So I'll get as many as I can. I'm rough, but those are projects, as you saw tonight with Antioch Middle and Park, that go through an RFP process. Somebody comes through, walks the site, does an estimate, but that will probably take more than three weeks.
And I'll emphasize that our budget is a living document also. So we'll give as much as we can to it off the budget, but there are always times that we can go back and do some revisions and, and according to the board's priorities.
Yeah. And I apologize too. I've made it sound like actual estimates of these things. But if it's like HVAC, we know a range of what an HVAC, you know, would cost or, you know, updating a track, like, you know, at all, rough estimates. And obviously, I appreciate the under, underscoring of the fact that these, all of these things are alternative. It's just really the question for us is do we want to make this a priority in the budget? And I echo what trustee Rocha was saying, that this, the time seems to be ripe to undergo some of these projects. I definitely agree. So I feel good about this. Superintendent Anello, do you feel like you have enough direction, enough information for Friday, Friday board? And then we're going to just, this is going to be something that we'll talk about probably over the next two meetings, I would anticipate.
Yep, I think we have definitely have a starting point. Do you feel comfortable with that, Ms. Romero?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then also just want to like echo to what trustee Hernandez said. I personally don't want you to bend over backwards to like try to compile this information. I think, I mean, all of this stuff is in flex. So just as much to kind of get a rough estimate of what, what this would mean for us. So, but don't spend hours on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, trustee Rocha. And so with that, let's move along. Item 10, resolutions for first reading. We do not have any. And then next, item 11, resolutions for immediate action. We have two of them. So our first is resolution 2020-21-41 Declaration of Employment of Certificated Substitutes on SBESTC Best Waivers for the 2122 school year.
So each year, in this time of year, the board will see these come forward in preparation for our next school year. This allows someone to come in and substitute teach for one year while they are passing the CBEST test. They can only do it for one year. But with the shortage that's been in California, this is helpful for us to make, to ensure that we have an adequate substitute pool as the school year starts. So I would ask the board to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve CBEST waiver certification.
Wonderful. So a motion made by trustee Dr. Lewis. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Hernandez. Ms. Cavalero, can you do a roll call vote for us?
Yes, trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to adopt resolution 2020-21-41 Declaration of Employment of Certificated Substitutes on CBEST waiver for the 2021-2022 school year passes 5-0.
All right, next up, letter B, resolution 2020-21-42 Declaration of Need to Request Emergency Cross-Cultural Language and Academic, so CLAB, authorizations through the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing, CCTC, for teaching or for teachers teaching students who are English language learners for the 2122 school year.
I move approval, ma'am.
Is there a second to that motion? To trustee Rocha's motion? Seconded by trustee Hack? If there is no discussion, I would ask Ms. Cavalero to do a roll call.
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to adopt resolution 2020-21-42 Declaration of Need to Request Emergency CLAB Authorization through the CTC passes 5-0.
Thank you. All right, letter C, the last one for this section, resolution number 2020-21-43 Declaration of Need to Request Emergencies Short Term Staff Permits through the California Commission of Teacher Credentialing, CCTV, for the 2122 school year.
I move approval.
Second.
Sorry, my dog was screaming at me. So motion made by trustee Rocha, seconded by trustee Hack. And if Ms. Cavalero could do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to adopt resolution 2020-21-43 Declaration of Need to Request Emergency Short Term Staff Permits through the California CT, through the CCTC for the 2021-2022 school year passes 5-0.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cavalero. And next up, we have resolutions for second reading and action. We don't have any. Item 13, board policies for first reading. We don't have any. Item 14, board policies for second reading and action. We don't have any. Item 15, information items for general information. We don't have any tonight. 16, future agenda items from board members. Anything that folks want to request with the understanding that we only have two meetings left in this year. And so, you know, if we want to get the ball rolling on certain things, you know, we have two meetings. Trustee Rocha?
I'm really concerned, and I mentioned it before, about our issues of taking care of our structure. I want to explore the issue of the bond issue. If we could have some information back, I know we tried it once. Maybe we just need to hear the same information again. What would be the cost and what would it cover? Because we need to start the process if we're going to even consider it now for the future.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good. So future bonds maybe would be the title. Anything else for that one?
Yes, I'm sorry. No, I'm fine.
So, and I, I don't know if this is a sort of, wait, a board item, but I do want to have a conversation around Title I schools. I know we're a Title I district, but in terms of like how that money is allocated to specific school sites, if we could have a conversation about that, like within the district, you know, because when we're having conversations about the allocation of funding and all that stuff, I'd just like to get a little bit more of a clearer picture. Because I know that, you know, as a district, we have a Title I plan. Maybe we can have, you know, a session to talk about that. And I don't know if we have time between now and the end of the year, but at some point I would like to have that conversation.
Anything else, trustee Hack or trustee Hernandez? Obviously with the understanding that you can email us, looks like trustee Hack's good. I'm seeing Hack shaking from trustee Hernandez. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think so. Overall, I'm good. And I imagine, but I imagine that we have things on the horizon, talking about what next year might look like and a little bit more detailed of a conversation on that. So just kind of want to put that out there if that's already something that we're planning on doing, but I'm sure it is.
Okay. Wonderful. And we will discuss that in our agenda meetings next Wednesday. And so moving on, additional comments that exceeded the first 30-minute session, which is item 17. Since we didn't have any the first 30 minutes, we don't have any. So reports, comments from board members. So let's go in true alphabetical order this time. So trustee Hack? Trustee Hack, any reports?
I'm first, alphabetically. Whoa.
I know, I switched it up.
No, a couple things. Graduation's right around the corner. I know Kelly's doing, asking us to share over committee. I've been to three four events all by myself. I would like to see some people show up, for those of you that's coming down the road. Also, back in December, I challenged you to an out and about document, so I would like to see that maybe happening. I tell me, get out for the summer, see what your recordings have been. I have mine. Get to share. That's it, for me.
Thank you, Trustee Hack. I'm actually gonna have that, as an, I'll add that as an item for discussion to our out and about report. Okay, Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, so I have a few things to report on. I think the first, as the Contra Costa County School Board Association representative, we did have a meeting on the 20th, and the only item to report out about is that we did elect a slate of officers that are going to be in charge of the Contra Costa County School Board Association. So I do have that to report out to you guys. And then personally, some of the things that I've been up to, I've met with several of the Puente students, who are working on a project where they interview different community members and see what they do for career-wise. And so it was really great getting to talk to those students. They asked such great questions, and, you know, it's always a joy, as everyone knows, getting the chance to interact with the students, because they are, you know, the heart and soul of everything that we do. I had the opportunity also to attend a, the mock interviews that Dozer Libby Medical High School does, in preparation for their juniors to learn some of those professional skills. And again, super great seeing just the different styles and the different ways that students approach these interviews, and the different ways that they're kind of growing and developing. And it's especially, you know, interesting this year that they were virtual, because, you know, as I've, you know, thought about it in my own professional life, virtual interviews are almost certainly going to be a part of the future of the hiring process, kind of moving forward. And so it's great to see that our students are developing those kinds of technological skills. And then I also had a chance to be a guest speaker for the Dozer Libby HOSA Chapter, HOSA Future Health Professionals, an organization that I was very involved in when I was in high school and through college. So it was great to see that organization and the things that they're doing. So, yeah, I'm excited. It's always exciting getting to report on the times that I actually get to interact with our students, even though it's virtually most of the time.
Thank you so much. And so for me, I don't have anything to report out that we haven't already kind of touched on tonight. Bicycle Garden, definitely just tried to take what Trustee Hack says, and try to be out and about, and try to just kind of show my face to folks in the community more, but nothing specific to report out. The one thing that I did just want to share with everybody is that Deer Valley High School students, every year, people in the community, whether an individual or a business, can support a Deer Valley High School student in need by buying a yearbook. And so I posted the information. I know that it's in a couple different places on social media, but if, if supporting a Deer Valley High School student by buying a yearbook is something that interests you, it's $90. So it's definitely not cheap, but also not terribly expensive. So that's the only thing I wanted to just flag. And then, and also thank you, Kelly, for setting all of the doodle poles up to make sure that all of the promotion ceremonies and the graduation ceremonies are covered. And so, Trustee Dr. Lewis?
Thank you for that. I've been a little bit busy these last couple weeks. Over the past weekend, you know, I'm the president of the local Kiwanis Club, and we held our tri-tip dinner. That was a success. So for those people that came out, we really appreciated. I know there were some, some plates reserved for, you know, our first responders. So we want to thank those, you know, Sean McCully, Helen Cantando, you know, all those folks that were really involved in, you know, providing those meals. It really goes a long way. You know, those meals, we also provided some meals for our veterans. So we want to thank, you know, Antoine Webster, and J.R. Wilson, and Velma Wilson, and Deborah Hicks, and all the people that were involved, you know, with that event. And we, you know, we think it was a success. So I too had, like, this past, in conjunction with the Rotary Club, spoke at the African-American Male Achievement as one of the panelists, along with Chief Brooks, and some other folks from the community. So, and then after the virtual event, we actually went to Park Middle School and ate lunch with the kiddos. So it was a really good experience. So that happened this week. I too participated in the mock interviews for Dozer Libby, and that was a really great experience. The young, young man that I, with the interviewed me, was, you know, he was scary smart. So I, I was sort of humbled, you know, by his questions and sort of his, his perspectives. And, you know, we've, you know, we've been talking over the last couple weeks, and, you know, about a number of different things. So, you know, I'm really, I'm really hopeful for the future, and looking forward to what he's gonna do in the future. I also want to have a conversation, and I talked to Superintendent Nello about this in previous, you know, this is maybe for board consideration, I don't know, but at some point, I think that it's very important for us to have conversations, I'm sorry, that we allow space for our principals to come and have presentations here for our board. You know, because, again, I know the superintendent and the staff, they do a phenomenal job of giving us that 50,000-foot view, but if we really want to understand sort of what's going on at the school sites, I think we need to consider having principals, and we can allow space, maybe a 10-minute meet, 10-minute presentation per board meeting, for principals to come in and give a, sort of a school site update. You know, I think that could be a health, it can allow for a healthy conversation, and I think that could be something that could be really beneficial for all of us. And, ba-ba-ba, Title I, ba-ba-ba-ba, principal's, and then, I also want to say, on a, on a sort of a lighter note, Najee Harris signed his contract, you know, and as, as things come, come to me, I like to announce them. You know, I do, I know we want to celebrate Najee as an athlete, but we also want to celebrate all the other students. So students, when you're out there in the community, please reach back, because we want to celebrate you, we want to welcome you home, and we want to have, so that way folks know all the wonderful work that's going on here in our city and in our school district. So, and that's, that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Yeah, what is it, 13.1 million, four years guaranteed, not too shabby?
That's, yes.
Not like I follow it or anything, but last but certainly not least, Trustee Rocha, comments, reports.
Okay, my comments are going to be, one thing, and then, you know, I asked if I could close with Mr. Marquetti's. Okay, first of all, I would just want you to remind people, I don't know if they're listening about this, is the vaccines. You realize that June 1st to the 5th, Dallas Ranch will have the vaccines for anyone that, oh, it's actually for students, but it's now anybody that wants to come in. Then on June 8th to the 12th is the Antioch Middle School. And then on June 22nd to the 26th is Dallas Ranch. So in case somebody's listening, they might want to put it down if they're interested in having a vaccination. At this time, is it appropriate to close, or is it, you want to wait?
Trustee Rocha, is there a, is there a way we can get that information, so we can share it out? Is there, okay, okay, if you can get that to us. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so, do you want me to close now, or?
I, I do just.
I think you have more people that you want to speak to.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to note Mr. Burgerhouse, our Scott Burgerhouse, his mother, Yvonne, I believe was her first name. Burgerhouse passed away just about two weeks ago now, but I just wanted to kind of note that. But, Trustee Rocha, if you want to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting in honor of...
I would like to do that, but did you finish the roll call about if anybody wanted to, I don't know if Mr. Hack was asked, is, has been asked if he wanted to add anything to it?
Let me just quickly, future meeting, June 9th and the 23rd. So that's our two next regularly scheduled. But then, yes, Trustee Hack, if you wanted to add anything, Trustee Dr. Lewis?
I was just talking about Mrs. Burgerhouse, who lives about a block and a half from where I am, for the last 40-some years. And Scott was in my classroom way back when, and his sister is also in Southern School. So I've known the Burgerhouses forever. And Romano Marquetti, when I first moved to town, I rented his house for two years when he taught band for two years. And Romano is just a great musician, just a neat person. I mean, this is that's where also, I think there is a mention of. And there's more thoughts? Okay.
Romano was a very strong Kiwanis member, and he was 46 years in our school district. Romano Marquetti has been known by all our students. In fact, I have to give you a little bit, that my son Louis Rocha was his student at Park Middle School on trumpet. So that's how far back we go. So Romano, I've known him for a long time, and I really, should I say that I'm hoping that he's resting and he's enjoying life in our next world? But he will have a services if anybody likes to go, and it's going to be held at the VFW on Fulton Shipyard, and on June the 26th, from 2:00 to 4:30. And I'm sure it's going to be packed, because Romano came across to many, many of us, and he was very active in our community. And one of the oldest families, his mother lived to be 101. So thank you. I, I want to close in his name.
Trustee Dr. Lewis, did you want to add something onto this? We've kind of got a couple people that we're honoring right now. And also, important to note that Mrs. Burgerhouse was a librarian at Fremont, too. And so definitely both of these individuals, I mean, innumerable contributions to our Antioch community, both as individuals and their, and their family. And fun fact, I actually grew up across the street from Mr. Burgerhouse. So also, definitely, Antioch, you know, we're all very close. But, Trustee Dr. Lewis, if you wanted to say it a few words?
So, in terms of Mr. Marquetti, I mentioned the tri-tip dinner, and I knew you were going to close, so I did want to announce that we have, in his honor, we are changing it just from the Kiwanis annual tri-tip dinner to the Marquetti annual tri-tip dinner. So we're gonna do, because he actually started it. Yeah, so we actually started it. So we had that conversation this week, and we'll be honoring him moving forward in that fashion, so.
Well, thank you. That's great. I really appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And then, Trustee Hernandez, I just wanted to just give you a moment to, just since everybody's kind of...
Yeah, well, I didn't have the honor of meeting Mrs. Burgerhouse. I have worked a lot with Mr. Burgerhouse when he was principal of Dozer Libby Medical High School, and I was doing a lot of work with our alumni association. And I just think, you know, people's family is such a strong reflection of the values that people grow and instill and develop. And Mr. Burgerhouse is an amazing person, an amazing staff member that we have, so I can only imagine how great his mother was. So my heart does go out to that family right now. And then, you know, in high school and throughout, in fact, school district, I did play trombone, and, you know, it's hard not to have, you know, be involved in music and not to have, at least run into Mr. Marquetti every now and then. So he did also touch my life as well. And so, you know, my heart also goes out to his passing.
So, Trustee Rocha, if you want to make a motion in, to adjourn the meeting in Mr. Marquetti's memory, you can do that now.
You're muted. You're muted, Trustee Rocha.
Oh, okay. I move that we adjourn in, actually, in Romano Marquetti's department, and also remembering Mrs. Burgerhouse. So thank you.
Trustee Hack, I wanted to just, yes, please. Okay, so motion made to adjourn the meeting in honor of Mr. Marquetti and Mrs. Burgerhouse, made by Trustee Rocha, seconded by Trustee Hack. Ms. Cavalero, if you can do a roll call?
Trustee Hack?
I'm out of here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn in memory of Romano Marquetti and Mrs. Burgerhouse passes 5-0.
Contagious, oh my gosh. All right, good night, everybody.